Good evening and welcome to our 6:00 PM City Council meeting. Please, of August 23rd, 2022, please let the record show that we have council members, all council members are present except for Councilmember Nadolski who has to be excused, as well as Councilmember Blair who also has to be excused, and he might be joining us here in a little bit. With that, we have asked Councilmember Ritchie if he could please help us lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie. And if now, if you would like to join us in a moment of silence, you are welcome to do that, please. And next, we have some acknowledgements, and we have Rebecca Tierney here from the Diversity Commission to take that on for, to talk about some back-to-school and education. So Rebecca, welcome. You're welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you. So I'm going to read some of the biographies of those educators that were nominated. As I read your information, you can stand, and then when we're done, you can come up for a picture. Trina Rocher. Trina Rocher is a gear-up director of the Ogden Gear-up Program. She's utilized her extensive higher education, including a doctorate in educational leadership, as the Director of Gear-up. Among her many other professional positions, Ms. Rocher also served as Assistant Superintendent of the Utah Schools for the Deaf and currently teaches concurrent enrollment American Sign Language at Fremont High. In addition, and what she was nominated for, is the work she's done around the tutoring services in the Ogden School District, which is included creating a data-tracking system to help students with their makeup credit, and many, many other things having to do with tutoring, and really bringing tutoring up a level in the Ogden School Districts, which helps open doors to higher education opportunities. Christina Graff Charbonneau was born and raised in Ogden, attending Ben Loman High School and Utah State University. As a kind and warm-hearted, cool educator, Christina teaches preschool to special education students at the Ogden City School District. She's worked with a diverse set of young students in central Ogden, facing various life challenges, disabilities, and backgrounds for the past 17 years. Phenomenal leader, teacher, and truly cares for her students in a way that motivates her students and those around her to learn and grow while being allowed to be fully themselves. She's a fantastic educator in Ogden City and deserves recognition for how she shows up as a teacher every day. Gisela Lopez-Alonso grew up in Ogden and is a first-generation college student from Weber State University, and is currently working on her master's degree in social work. I added that because I knew that. She works tirelessly to organize support and implement tutoring services in the Ogden School District. As a tutor specialist, her responsibility is to provide underrepresented students a pathway to academics and mental health support, as well as connections to higher education. She is driven to give back to her community and encourages students to connect with their educators and to reach for their dreams. Kim Richards, language arts teacher at Mount Ogden Junior High. Kim Richards grew up in Ogden, graduating from Ogden High in Weber State University with both a bachelor's and master's degree in English. She's dedicated her hard career and 28 years to Mount Ogden Junior High. She says she has loved every year. Ms. Richards has coached the Academic Bowl and Mock Trial Team, directed the community of caring night for ninth-grade language arts, enacted teacher tweets to publicly acknowledge positive behaviors of students in classes, shopped with students, and slept outside in winter for a Christmas fundraiser, and taught job interviewing and job application skills to underrepresented students. As a veteran teacher, Ms. Richards provides support and resources for new teachers. So amazing group of educators.
Yeah, you can, you can come on up and get a picture and join us. We really appreciate it.
Before they scoot out, can I say something?
Before they scoot out, we have some words for you.
They're just trying to leave as fast as possible.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
We're tired after the first couple days of school.
So I am, I'm thankful that you are here, and the recognition is well-deserved. I am not an educator, and I just so appreciate all the hard work that you've done, not just leading up to pre-COVID, but through COVID, and what you guys did, and continue to push. And I can tell that, if I bet you, if your students were here, they would say that you're great mentors, and that they're going to do great things because you gave them the ability to do great things. So thank you for doing all you're doing in our, in our, in our great city, and continue to do that, and gosh, thank you for everything you've done.
I'll add a little bit to that. I'll say that I am an educator, and I, that was, that's my career, and it's just really exciting to have you here and to have an opportunity to recognize you, because everybody knows that what you do is commendable, and you know, you couldn't get paid all the money in the world to, to do what you do, and we just so much appreciate it. Gisela, I was curious, are you, are you roots from Mexico?
Yeah.
Yeah? From where?
Sinaloa.
Sinaloa? Okay, okay. Baila banda?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Did she just ask her if she could dance? Anyway, I just want to say thank you as well. These are four teachers that represent a ton of teachers in the Ogden School District that are just, just fantastic, and so thank you for all that you do.
I think, I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna give you another round of applause because we're so excited that you came. Thank you. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thanks again. Take care. Appreciate it. Well, that was nice. Do we have any other acknowledgements from council members? Or the administration? So we'll move on to our next item here, which is recognition, and for Randy Ray, and Councilmember Ritchie is going to help us present this.
All right, thank you. This is awesome. I'm, I'm excited to do this, and I don't know if we can have Randy come up, Coach Ray, if you can come up here. While he's coming up, I've got to get ready, though. So.
Pull that towel up.
Here we go.
Oh, look at you.
There we go. So, here we go. So as a lifelong Weber State fan, nobody would ever confuse me for a college athlete, but as a, as a Weber State fan, I can now truthfully tell my kids and grandkids that I suited up for Coach Ray. So, anyway, it's a truth statement there.
I'd have to see you play first, though.
Just don't make me do ladders or anything like that, so, okay. The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Randy Ray for his contributions to Weber State University and the Ogden Community. As the, as the head coach of Weber State University's men's basketball team for the past 16 years, Randy Ray built a strong culture and impacted the lives of many. He epitomizes the Wildcat spirit and has brought a strong sense of pride to the community. His leadership, vision, and passion have taken Weber State's basketball program to new heights. Randy Ray achieved great success during his tenure at Weber State. He led the Wildcats to five Big Sky Championships, three NCAA tournament appearances, and was named Big Sky Coach of the Year four times. Randy ended his career with 316 victories, making him the winningest coach in Weber State and Big Sky Conference history. Randy retired in May following a storied coaching career. We are grateful for his dedication and commitment to Ogden City and Weber State University. We wish him continued success in the next chapter of his life. He will continue to be an ambassador for Weber State and Ogden City for many years to come. And that's presented today.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Come on over this way, Coach.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have to snap a picture with you on this, on this end. Thank you so much. Thank you, Coach. Yes, you bet.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mark. What's up, Randy?
Anybody here with you, Coach? Nice to be in the picture?
No. That could be a fact. Get out of here.
And if you don't mind sharing a few words, it's up to you, but we would love to hear from you, Coach. Thank you.
I'll just say this real quick. It's been, 16 years has gone by really, really fast. When they hired me, I probably wasn't the most qualified or whatever for the job. I didn't think I could get the job, and they took a chance on me. And every day that I coached at Weber State, I took that responsibility extremely seriously, and it's always been an honor and a privilege just to be the head coach up there. And I took that seriously, and tried to represent, you know, our program, our staff, our players, and our university the right way, and, and I tried to do it the way I felt was the right way, and hopefully we did that. But like I said, it was just a privilege to be the coach up there. Weber's had tremendous, tremendous tradition, and it was, it was stressful trying to uphold that, that tradition. But as I said, I, we tried to do it the right way, what I felt was the right way, with a lot of character, integrity, treat people the way you want to be treated, build a strong culture. I felt we worked really, really hard at that, and for the most part, I can walk away feeling like we did it the way we wanted to do it. And I feel really good about that. But not only did, you know, I got, we got great support from the, from the university, the administration, the students, everybody, but the community of Ogden is why we've stayed here for so long. We've had chances to move to bigger jobs, and more paying jobs, and higher paying jobs throughout my career, but we couldn't get pulled out of here. And it's because of not just the university, but the community, and the people, and the relationships we built, and the support that we felt, not only as a program, but as a family. We raised our kids here. So this will always be home, even though we're not going to be here much longer. This will always be home for us, and it's been special to us. So I appreciate you guys for supporting me, supporting our program, supporting my family throughout the whole thing. So appreciate it. We, we won't be gone much. We'll be back once in a while, but thank you for everything that you've done, not just for me, but continue to do for Weber State, because Weber State is truly special. It really is a special place. Again, that's why, that's why I couldn't leave. So thank you so much for everything you did. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair, if I can just, one other comment. So it goes both ways. We, when I was a brand-new member of the Board of Directors for the Wildcat Club, I had the opportunity to travel with the team to UCLA, and I was this young kid, well, I felt like a younger kid, it was a little, like 10 or 11 years ago, anyway, but Randy treated us so well. He came up, and my wife's name, most people miss it up, Shanda, but he's like, hey, Ken, hey, Shanda, and he treated us, and I realized at the time, later on, that we were with these really high contributing people to the program, and, and we're traveling in this group, and I started to realize I was maybe a little bit out of place in that group, but he didn't treat it me that way. He treated us like we were, we were part of the thing, and, and it was just, just awesome, and I've always been a big fan, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Ritchie, for leading this recognition. We really appreciate it. Next on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding concerns or on ideas on any topic. If you would like to speak, please come up, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Hope you'll be a little liberal on that three minutes. My name is Don Mueller, and I'm a resident of Ogden City, graduate of Weber State, and I've run in a real estate appraisal business for the last 45 years here in Ogden. Makes me want to be a teacher after I see these fine ladies that were here. I'm here regarding Flip Your Strip program. I live in the Mountain Pines subdivision, which is in the Ogden City Limits. It's located roughly 46th and Skyline. We made an application the minute the program opened, and we went through everything, and we were turned down. I know that there's $100,000 that the City Council voted to appropriate, along with another $100,000 from Weber Basin Water, which is awesome, you, you wonderful people, because I'm a very green person, as you can see with my hat, okay? We have a gated, private community. That said, if you go inside, it looks like your neighborhood. We have streets, we have curb and gutter, we have sidewalks. What we're proposing to do in order to save water, which is the intent of the program, was we assessed every one of our lot owners $1,800 that we have now collected, and we wanted to remove the sod in our park strips and install the appropriate landscaping. We felt pretty bad that we were turned down, because I know the money's there, and it's available. After some continued talks with the program leader, or the approval person, Barton Brierley, he approved the section along Skyline for the Flip Your Strip. We want to do, we want to make this a model subdivision for Ogden. We want the entire thing to have, remove all the grass out of our strips. I hope that you will consider that. I read through all the information that Barton Brierley sent to me today, and I couldn't find one place where it says, we do not, we do not provide rebates for home, or for homes that are in a gated, not gated, private subdivision. And I think we were turned down based on somebody's opinion. I hope you'll reconsider. I've talked to Ben Nadolsky at length about it. He, he doesn't see that there's a problem. I hope that you'll move forward with that program. There's only been like 30 applicants to the program. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I don't know if there are comments from the administration, but it's up to them if they want to comment on your, on your concerns.
I'd love to hear any comments.
In a minute, they might comment on it. Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I've noticed that Councilmember Ritchie has not taken off that jersey. I wanted to shout out to Brandon Garcia once again, and the City Council's commitment to making sure that these sessions are broadcast via Zoom, because I had a client meeting in Salt Lake City, and I was able to listen to the work session while it was happening on the way down, so that I would be able to comment on some of the RDA things that are important to me. So I appreciate that commitment to letting folks be able to participate in the process, because to be able to stop everything that you're doing at 4:00 in the afternoon is privileged, and there's not a lot of people who have that, so I appreciate that. With regards to the Flip the Strip comment, we've talked a lot about more carrot, less stick, and Mr. Johnson had alliterated in the meeting, the work session meeting, that, you know, we're doing a really great job. And I think if we want to encourage folks, that we should be able to be flexible, and while we cannot match it on the county side, or the department who is going to be providing that from Pine View, it's up to us to make sure we encourage this type of behavior. These are taxpayers. Their home taxes that they pay, a certain percentage goes to the county, but, you know, we participate in that as well. These are people that shop at our restaurant, at our school, shop at our restaurants, and, buy things, and pay taxes on goods and services here. They deserve to be supported just as regular citizens are. So I encourage you to, to look at case by case. When a community is coming together and asking to be a model, I think that that should be rewarded. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the last seven years, I have come here, and I see you guys, and many times, I am rude, and I'm mean, and sometimes request many things, but today is different. Today, I want to say, I come here in person because I want to say thank you. Thank you for make a dream possible and reality. The sidewalk around Wasatch technically is done. I record how the children use the sidewalk. It's phenomenal. My special thanks is going to, to you guys. Ben Nadolski usually make me informed about what's going on, about everything. But a special thing for BJ Miller, I know they are not here, Daniel Gill, and Aim Franklin. They was, they've been working their heart. Sometimes the neighbor, we are mean, but it's grateful. I invite you guys walk around there 8:00 in the morning, or stop somewhere, and look how safe our children go there. This is great. Thank you so much for make this possibility, you know, and this dream go through. I remember when I been here, and somebody almost killed my son and two friends biking to Wasatch. I started knocking the door here many times. Now it's done. It's great. 36th Street, you can see how many students walk to go in Weber State. Now I have one more request. Taylor Avenue, between 32nd and 36th Street. I will find it more grand for that project. It's like almost half-mile. But now it's just to tell thank you to everyone being involved in it. Mark, thank you too. I know you will have a little great participation there. I know I am mean with you sometimes, but it's part of the process, you know? That is the only thing I want to say today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sebastian, for your nice, kind words today. We appreciate it. Come on up, please.
All right, Travis Pete, also an Ogden resident. I just primarily, I had the opportunity to just kind of review historic preservation over the last little while, and just even watch with Ogden City Schools what their dynamic was. They said, tear down and build a new Ogden High and a new Ben Loman, and the bond failed. They said, restore Ogden High and build a new Ben Loman, the bond passed. Ogden City Schools came back and said, let's tear down Polk School, tear down Horseman, tear down T.O. Smith, build three new schools. The bond failed. They said, let's restore Polk Elementary, build a new Horseman and a new T.O. Smith. The bond passed. And so if the citizens can speak that loudly when it comes to bond initiatives, that is taxation on top of taxation, then I think our priorities need to also focus that direction also. I'm not sure if there's fire protection in the new buildings, the new projects along 25th Street, maybe if the scale's small enough that they don't need it, but as evidenced from 28th Street, there needs to be probably an added incentive that says, yes, let's do this. A number of years ago, Hilton Hotel pulled out of their hotel here in Ogden because they didn't want to put in a fire protection system, sprinklers. Subsequently, the Park Hotel, and now the Marriott chain, has, has rectified that, has put in sprinkler systems. And so if we're treating our guests for that, with that much safety, hadn't we ought to have that much concern for our residents? And if there's a fire on either of the two projects, the proposed project coming in at Union Square Phase 2, or the current on the north side of 25th Street, if there's a fire in any of those, all the historic structures around them are beyond in jeopardy, because as we know, there's just essentially tinderboxes. Now, I could literally give you a map of everything that's burned since my childhood, and, and those structures, it's, it's a shame to see them gone. The Skulcroft Mansion at 53326th Street, and the big red brick monolith that took its place. It's just, it's, the protection needs to come in, and so I think as the opportunity with the work session and development agreements and all those other types of things, what can they bring to us that's added and above what's required? And so I think the dynamic to me is saying, if we can watch the taxpayers say, hey, yes, tax us for historic restoration and preservation. General Brent Skulcroft went to Polk Elementary, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff under five presidents, yet the Ogden City Schools said, tear it down. Wait, we want our children to know where heritage, we want them to touch heritage. Even the monument that Larkins have dedicated over at the cemetery is dedicated, said that this our parents did for us, stone on stone. So I encourage you again to look at that. And then also, Art in Bloom is this week. Floral designers from all over the state are coming to the Eccles Art Center, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Open House Thursday from 5:00 till 7:00. Friday and Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00 regular hours. But floral designers from all over the state are recognizing Ogden, coming here for the last 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we'll move on to our online participants. It looks like we have Rene Felker. Hope I'm not butchering the name. Rene, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Please state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Sorry, I couldn't make it in person. Hello, I'm Timothy Rene Felker, an Ogden resident since 1998, retired Air Force officer. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss my personal situation with the city's action at the airport. Starting in 2013, I developed a plan to create a business from, from when I retired. At the time, I was thinking 2019, 2020. The business was to modify and provide builder assistance to RV10 builders, and RV10 being the same type of aircraft I built in my garage here in Ogden, and that I currently hold a repairment certificate for. Over the years, I've discussed purchasing an additional hangar with the then-current airport managers, Ed Rich, Royal Eccles, John Greiner, and then the current manager. I was not quite ready to retire. I continued the plan. When the current airport manager came on board, I met with him to discuss moving the fence line back so that I could have public access to Airport Road like other hangars in the area. He said that was not a problem, and that it could be worked. But as part of the discussion, we wandered into hangar lease topic, and for the first time, I heard the airport considered the residual value in the hangar to be theirs, and that the lease renewals were probably not going to, were going to end based on a yet-to-be-released plan. That was a shock to me, since the three previous airport managers... That was a shock to me, since the three previous airport managers told me I could get a renewal once my lease was completed, as long as I was meeting the terms of the lease. Shortly after that, I made the decision that my business plan was not workable, since the hangar was critical to its success. Since I own two hangars for some time, after the meeting, I started to sell to KSL and word of mouth to other hangars. But word was already starting to get out about the hangar situation at Ogden, and the best offer I got was 50% of what I was asking. My asking price was only slightly higher than my actual investment in the hangar. In 2014, I paid 82,000 for the hangar on Airport Road. The funds were from my retirement savings. I had always planned to get most of the money, if not all, back to fund my wife's and I's retirement. The way it looks now, Ogden City will be funding the retirement with my hangar. But unfortunately, Ogden City had put a provision in the lease that requires the improvement to be removed within 60 days of the lease completion. I know the city attorney has stated in public meetings that the hangar owners would not take the hangars down. They're wrong. I will be taking the hangar down.
Thank you, Mr. Felker. Next, we have Heath Sato.
Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I was glad to see our RDA process discussed in the work session tonight, and I agreed with Councilmember Hayer on a surprising number of this point, so thank you for that. And I'm glad this conversation has started, but I believe it's only the beginning. A new list of pre-qualified developers is great, but the issue is that there's no policy I see requiring us to, anyone to even consider that list necessarily. And unfortunately, I see little positive change coming from this discussion unless we drastically increase the percentages of projects that are widely advertised in an RFP process. I really do appreciate the new requirement for notice to the board when the agency enters into an exclusive negotiation agreement with the party. I think that'll be good to get that information earlier in the process. But again, what I really want to see is far more of these opportunities advertised widely rather than developers that are selected in private processes that are opaque to the public. The pie charts you were shown today, they kept all the RFP projects as a single unit, the ones that were advertised out into the world. But all those development projects decided outside of any public process were split up to create a balanced look on the chart. But the fact remains, no matter how you slice it up, there's only 20% of the properties taxpayers have paid for are published in any way to see who might have the best idea and the development that will be the best return on our investments as a city. It's our money, it's our property. And there seems to be some misunderstanding that I've been solely interested in money. I'm sorry if I've not been clear on this, because that's not the case. What I mean is the very best possibility for every property, because we don't know what we're missing out on. And we keep saying this property is the city's built out, so these properties should be valued more by us in how we choose who gets these properties. The purchase with our tax dollars pre-developed into an attractive development opportunity. In 75% of these cases, the city adds even more financial incentives on top of preparing the property for these developers. So again, we need to take action to drastically increase the percentages of projects that are widely advertised in an RFP process, particularly when there are sizable incentives, and use that process to encourage the best development of the city. Competition is healthy, let's encourage that, rather than shoving it to the side. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sato. Looks like we don't have anyone else online. So with that, we move on to comments from the administration.
Thanks, Chair. We've spent a fair amount of time talking about HOAs and the Flip the Strip program. That is something we involved our attorneys, we sat and looked at and felt that it isn't in our right of way, it isn't property that is the city's, and there are state laws that require different processes in order to give funds, city funds, to private owners. Our feeling was at the time, we were just getting this Flip the Strip going, that we were going to stick with what, the property that's within a city right of way. We can relook at it again without, I'm not giving false hope, but we'd be happy to take another look at it and see if there's another way around it. There's also people who don't have a sidewalk, and they don't qualify either, even if they have on a public street, if they're on a public street. So this isn't perfect. It wasn't perfect when we put it out. We put it out in a hurry. We tried to hit the summer timeframe, and it's something that we're willing to go back and look at and talk about. But we have spent a little bit of time on the HOA issue itself. So it's more complicated than it seems, and it's more complicated than you think because of state law and how that interweaves itself a little bit. I appreciate your energy. I appreciate you, I know of you. You've got good reputation in our community, we appreciate what you do. And like I said, we'll go back and see if that's something we can take a look at and find a way around it. I don't know that there is, but we're happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Comments from council members.
Can I just follow up with one more question? I mean, I just want to address Travis Pete's issue around fire systems and new apartments. I mean, all the new buildings would have to have some kind of fire system, right?
So it depends on when they were built, it depends on the code then, it depends if they remodel, it depends if they upgrade, they have to bring it up to code, it depends on what they're used for. It's a complicated issue. It isn't as simplistic as was presented today. And yes, we are worried about our historic buildings, and we are worried about them being protected. That has been dialogue even today, it was Dialogue Saturday, it was Dialogue Sunday. We are concerned, but the law only gives us certain bites at the apple, so to speak, with building owners, depending on what they're doing, when they're doing it, and what they're using the building for. I am not a building expert, and if you want more detail than that, we really need a building expert to come and be able to answer that question.
Okay. No more comments. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn this council meeting by Councilmember Hayer, second by Councilmember Chaberka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll give the recorder a little time to transition into our RDA meeting. Good evening again, and welcome to our special redevelopment agency meeting of August 23rd, 2022. Please let the record show that all board members are present except for Board Member Blair and Board Member Nadolski, who were asked to be excused. And the second item on our agenda is recommendation to move to a closed session to discuss one of the items listed here in our agenda. So if we have a motion for that, we'll entertain that.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adjourn into a closed session for one of the seven items listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hayer to adjourn, or to move, excuse me, to move into a closed session, and second by Councilmember Ritchie. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Chaberka?
Aye.
Board Member Hayer?
Aye.
Board Member Ritchie?
Aye.
Board Member White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye. That passes. We will adjourn, excuse me, we will move into the closed session, and we will be adjourning from both the closed session and our RDA meeting from the other room. So thank you, and we'll see you in the room.